Okay, okay, so just give me about five minutes.
Okay, can you just, just let me know when you're ready and then we'll, we'll start.
Okay, perfect.
Thanks a lot.
Erin sent an email about connecting.
Oh, so Erin's having trouble connecting.
He said he's being assigned as host, but um I, I just see an email from him in case staff can check that out.
Uh, yes, uh, I'm working on that right now.
I'll tell him you're working on it. Oh. What email do you need? I'm emailing and I can tell him.
Erin at double A at C uh arch dot C A.
Okay, hang on, Erin at?
C A R C H dot C A.
C A R C H dot C A.
Sorry guys, can you just unmute Nancy?
Okay. Hi Sabrina, did you want me? Uh Sylvia just got here.
Okay, that's fine, then Sylvia can proceed.
Okay, grand, thanks. And we're, we're also just trying to get Erin logged in here.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, hello. I can call it now, thank you so much.
Thank you Erin.
Good morning. Due to the COVID nineteen Committee of Adjustment public hearings are being conducted electronically via WebEx webinar, an online digital platform and streamed on the Toronto City Planning YouTube channel. Participants who registered in advance will be connecting to the hearing using a phone or compatible electronic device and are able to make their presentations to committee using WebEx webinar. Participants will be muted automatically upon entry. When your item is called, participants will be unmuted one person at a time by the moderator. Please mute your devices until called upon to speak. Today Committee of Adjustment is offering attendees the option to appear by video. Attendees who registered in advance to attend by video will be temporarily upgraded to panelist when their item is called. During this time, your camera will be enabled. You will only be visible during your five minutes allotted speaking time and at all other times your video will be disabled and you will be reinstated as an attendee. Committee of Adjustment staff will assist us by moderating the WebEx webinar platform, including sharing presentation material received within the written submission deadline. Members of the public and applicants are not allowed to share, to use the share screen or any other panelist controls during a video appearance. The host will remove you from the panelist role if you fail to respect this instruction. My name is Nancy Omen and I will be chairing this hearing. Panel members participating via WebEx webinar who can be seen and heard are Peter Reed, Nimrod Solomon, Aaron Chang, and Joanne Hayes. We acknowledge that the land we are meeting on is the traditional territory of many nations, including the Mississaugas of the Credit, the Anishnaabe, the Chipewa, the Haudenosaunee, and the Wendat peoples, and it is now home to many diverse First Nations Inuit and Métis peoples. We also acknowledge that Toronto is covered by Treaty thirteen with the Mississaugas of the Credit. In accordance with Sections forty-five and fifty-three of the Planning Act nineteen ninety as amended, this meeting of the Committee of Adjustment for the City of Toronto is called to order. The Committee of Adjustment considers applications for variances from the provisions of the zoning bylaw that apply to the property, permission to extend or alter lawful non-conforming uses, and consent to sever property to create new lots. Anyone attending today who wants to receive a copy of the committee's decision for an application must submit a written request by email to the general email address for the Committee of Adjustment Toronto and East York District Office. Please include your name, address, and an email address. Committee of Adjustment and T-Lab notifications and appeal updates will be sent by email only. If you do not agree with the decision of the committee, decisions may be appealed to the Toronto local appeal body known as T-Lab or in some limited circumstances to the Ontario Land Tribunal. Appeal instructions will be set out at the bottom of the committee's decision. Where an application is uncontested, the agent or applicant may proceed with their presentation if desired and when the committee does not require a presentation, applicants are to advise the chair should they wish to speak to the committee. The committee may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Each speaker, including the applicant or agent, will be given a maximum of five minutes to address the committee and I'll comment when you're reaching the five-minute mark. When addressing the committee, please speak slowly and clearly state your name and address. Please confine your remarks to the matters outlined in the application. The applicant or agent will proceed first with a presentation of the application and then individuals either, who are either in support or opposed to the application will be invited to speak. Committee members may ask questions of each speaker after they have completed their presentation. When all speakers are finished, the applicant or agent will be unmuted and will have an opportunity to rebut only those issues that were raised by the speakers. This will mark the end of the discussion and the application will be taken into committee for a decision. When a presentation is not required, panel members may ask questions and/or take the matter into committee for a decision. Please note, the committee may not entertain revisions to proposals at the hearing today. The committee may decide to defer the application if substantially revised to ensure the revised application is accurate and that all those entitled to notice are informed of the changes. Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, have the minutes of the last Committee of Adjustment public hearing been confirmed by the members?
Uh, through you Madam Chair, there are no minutes to be adopted or confirmed today.
Okay, thank you. Are there any declarations of interest by staff or panel members this morning? Ms. Hayes.
I declare on number fifteen two oh one Salmon, I have property in the neighborhood.
Okay, um. Okay, thank you. Are there any files to be closed this morning, Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer?
There are none.
Any deferrals that you're aware of?
Uh, yes, uh, there's one deferral, uh, item number nine, one thirty-six Ava Road, file A zero five one eight slash twenty-two T E Y. I believe there's speakers also on this item.
Yeah, I'm just gonna check here. Yeah, okay, so we'll just go in order then of the agenda. Um, well, let me go to my notes for a second. Is, what's the reason for deferral, do you know?
There were, there was a missed variance, I believe.
So that's the missed variance, number nine? Oh yeah, okay. All right, let's give it a shot. Okay, let's go to item number nine, panel members. Um, that's one thirty-six Ava Road. Do I have the agent on the line?
Hi there, I'm Drew Lazlo, agent for the owner.
Hi, Mr. Lazlo, um, I do have two speakers listed, um, if you could just state the reason for the deferral?
Sure, there was, uh, unfortunately we were just notified, uh, late last week about, uh, by the zoning examiner that a variance was missed on the original zoning review.
Okay, let me just go to the opposition before we take it into committee then. Um, do you have the opposition on the line?
Nadine Price, you've been unmuted.
Um, okay, hello, good morning everyone, um, so my-
Yes, so we're actually not gonna hear it this morning because we have to defer because there's a missed variance. So we have to recirculate, so I just, um, if you can just state your name for the record and then everything will be recirculated and you'll be notified when the next date is.
Okay, my name is Nadine Price.
And your address?
One sixty Glen Cedar Road.
Okay, thanks very much. Uh, do you have the second person?
Through you Madam Chair, I do not see the second reg- registered speaker, uh, in attendance.
All right, thanks. Okay, um, so panel members, you've heard we have to defer because there's a missing variance, so let's take it into committee on the deferral. Ms. Hayes.
Thank you. I'd like to move a motion to deferral to allow a new notice to issue in, to capture the missed variance.
Okay, and you're seconding Mr. Chang or was, I don't know, was that, okay. So that's the motion to defer, um, to deal with the missing variance. Moved by Ms. Hayes, seconded by Mr. Chang, all in favor. Okay, that carries and Mr. Lazlo, perhaps you can speak to the opposition also during that time. All right, so let's go to item number one. Which is twenty-one Hemlock Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey site, plan floor plans and elevations and we have a previous decision affecting the property. Okay, I don't show any opposition speakers. Do I have the agent on the line?
Michael Halpern, you've been unmuted.
Hi, yes.
Hi, can you just state your name for the record, please?
Uh, Michael Halpern, and I have representing the Sean McGaffey from W N D Planning, if he is also on the line.
All right, panel members, we have one variance before us, um, any questions for the agent, Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, if the applicant can just explain the annotated site plan to explain exactly what we're looking at there.
You there, Mr. Halpern?
Hi. Uh, sorry, there seems to be some technical issues here. Uh, my, my agent, they're not able to connect to the phone. They're, uh, they're still muted. Sean McGaffey from, uh, W N D. They're, uh, texting me saying that there's having some technical difficulty and that they're still muted.
So I'm confused. So you're Michael Halpern?
Yes.
Okay, you're listed here as the speaker because I don't have any other speakers listed, so are you able to explain what's on the screen? That was the question from one of the members.
Sorry, I'll try my best here. So, uh, what we're seeing on the screen here is from the site-specific zoning bylaw on the left, the actual built-out area, it's, uh, it's not actually fully, you know, against what we were allowed to build here. The explanation is that the building footprint was planned to be one point seven one from the lot line and it was built just slightly over.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Solomon?
It does, thank you.
Thank you.
Panel members, do you have any other questions for Mr. Halpern? Okay, sir, we don't have any other questions. We're ready to make a decision on this one. Anything you want to add before we take it into committee?
Uh, no, and I'm sorry for technical difficulties here.
Okay, well, we can hear you fine, so I think we're okay. All right, panel members, let's take it into committee for a decision. Mr. Reed.
Thanks Chair. Um, I do think that this variance request is minor. I think we're, we're talking about fifty centimeters or so over, um, the existing permissions and I think the impacts of that are minimal, so I move approval with no conditions.
Do I have a second or Ms. Hayes? So a motion to approve the application moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor. Okay, that carries unanimously, thank you. Item number two, forty-six Walker Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have an arborist report prepared by Wesley Sutherland Sentry, Central Tree Care. We have, um, forestry's asking for condition number one. Um, ravine and natural feature protection are okay. Uh, transportation have no concerns other than they want the license to be maintained. Uh, we have support from fifty-four Walker as well as two oh one Salmon and one, and eleven Walker Avenue. We have opposition from number sixty-nine Walker and fifty-seven Woodlawn. I'm showing one speaker listed. Uh, do I have the agent on the line?
Lee, it's Will Hudson from Hudson Architecture. I'm the architect and agent for the owner.
Okay, good morning. Uh, do we have the speaker listed?
Through you Madam Chair, yes we do.
Okay, Mr. Hudson, we do have one speaker in opposition, so can you do a presentation, no more than five minutes, please?
Sure, of course. Um, the proposal before you today is for the demolition and removal of two structures existing on the property uh, at the rear. One is the garage, uh, and the other is a shed in the rear corner of the garden. Uh, and the construction of a new accessory structure setback from the rear lot line, three meters, um. The existing shed and garage total footprint is just over twenty-seven meters squared and the new accessory structure as proposed is thirty, basically thirty-two meters squared. Uh, the gar- the existing garage is in poor shape structurally, uh, hasn't been used for parking um, since, uh, for a while, since two thousand and thirteen when the, uh, the owners got licensed front add parking. Um, the property is part, uh, falls under the TRCA and ravine uh, control, um, so it has a very strict rear yard setback of twelve meters and an expected or mandated landscape area with that. Um, so twelve meters is forty-eight feet, basically saying that you, you can't build back there. Um, so that has provoked one of the variances, uh, we uh, bec- al- also because it's regulated by TRCA and R M P, the owners hired an arborist and for, for about a year there was an ongoing consultation with, uh, R M P and forestry about how much to set back the proposed building from the rear lot line, but primarily the trees at the back, um, and specifically a white oak. Um, so initially we proposed a one point five meter setback at the rear of the property. And after, uh, talking to, um, R M P and forestry, we doubled it to three meters and they seemed to be satisfied with that. Um, the purpose of the accessory structure is really to take the place of the two buildings that have been removed. The, the garage was not well placed on the lot. It was halfway down what is a, a, a pretty generously long lot, but it was peculiar because it strangled the back garden. Uh, the lot's a hundred and seventy-five and a half feet long. Um, so in the new building, we'd like to have a recreation spot, uh, a studio for the owners, garden, storage. They've signed a commitment to use lather with the cithy, saying that that's what that structure will be. And my, uh, clients and owners have canvassed the neighborhood and they have some letters already registered with C F A. And they were a little late to get the other ones, but as of this morning, they've got fifty-four Walker, fifty-two, fifty Walker, forty-four, forty-two, forty. And on the south side of Walker, they've got forty-nine Walker, fifty-one, and eighty-nine. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, I think we're gonna hold the questions till we hear from the opposition, so we'll have you back after that. Okay.
Deborah Scott, you've been unmuted and you can enable your video as well.
Um, hi, I'm Deborah Scott and I live at fifty-seven Woodlawn Avenue West, directly behind the property. And I do apologize that, that I got my letter in late because at this time of year, I only saw it on Friday night and many of my neighbors, all of them basically, are away right now. Um, I looked this morning and their cars are not in the driveway. We have not been canvassed at all about this application. Um, living at fifty-seven Woodlawn Avenue West, there are three, we are three townhouses and we, we actually, um, protect the ravine and, and take care of our property together with no fences. Our other neighbors at fifty-one and fifty-nine, we all look into the ravine, so we're very, um, careful about the ravine. Unfortunately, um, the property at, at, um, I wouldn't have brought this up, but, um, Mr. Hudson brings up that they've got so many more letters. Fifth, uh, forty-six Walker is a party house and all the people on Walker get together and have parties there, so I have no doubt when they get my letter of opposition, they can go and get all kinds of people to give letters of support. And now, I can't argue against party house, um. They seem to now, it's Thursday night parties and, um, it slowed down a bit for COVID, um. And they, they had, do now shut down at the, at eleven o'clock because people have stocked that, so this will be a party house. The, the plans show it as, as not having a shed or any, any part of that. Now, the reason I'm concerned is, um, I, I wrote my letter and I was concerned about the white oak and last night I read the arborist report again. They're gonna injure six trees on my property. And, um, that doesn't seem very good. Like, we, we work at our end, um, to protect the ravine and, um, the reason there's the, the bylaw there for the ravine for a twelve-meter setback is a, is a really good idea and they want a seven point five meters of, um, landscaping and probably in the form of what the, um, the ferns and so on appropriate for the ravine. They have an extremely deep backyard of twenty-six point eight two meters, so they can certainly accommodate the twelve meters and do the landscaping. And I don't know why they should increase the allowed, um, area for their ancillary building by more than, um, fifty percent. They should just stay within the, um, required five percent of the, the lot area. So, um, I really don't want to see this approved. If you're concerned that I don't have more support of my neighbors here, I would ask that you defer it and I will get the support. But, um, it's, you know, it's, it's really unfortunate that we, we weren't consulted. Um, on the subject of the white oak, uh, the people at forty-six Walker, I got a notice in twenty sixteen at my door from the city because they, with a, with a demand that, that I, I had to deal with that tree right away um, because it was, um, dangerous and I, I wasn't even aware of that, um. And I did go and speak to or attempt to speak to forty-six Walker and say, why didn't you call us? So we had to, they, they, you know, they didn't even try and then no consultation, so the poor white oak got dealt with very quickly on an emergency sort of two-week notice as opposed to be more delicately, um, trimmed for its dead wood, um. And not being consulted here at all is, is really bad and, um, all the people on Woodlawn, like because it's the hill, it's beautiful, we're privileged, we're absolutely privileged to live on Woodlawn and have this beautiful ravine. But the noise comes up the hill and then it spreads along the ravine and, um, and we work hard to protect the ravine, so all of my neighbors who are away, we, we do a good job of it, I think, and, and there's no respect here and please, uh, you have bylaws in place, the twelve meters they should do with the seven point five meters of, of landscaping and they should be within the, um, five percent of the lot area for the size of their ancillary building, so that's my request. Thank you very much, committee.
Thank you. Panel members, do you have any questions for the speaker? Seeing none? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Scott. Is Will Hudson back on the line?
Yes, I am.
All right, if you can please respond to the issues raised.
I, I will. Um, I, I'm gonna stick to the bylaw, zoning bylaw issues, if I may, and the tree issues, um. The, we, as I say, it's been almost a year of, uh, negotiation and consultation between the arborist and forestry and R M P to establish what would be an appropriate, um, setback and, and treatment for the trees at the end of the ravine, um, which included the increase in our initial proposed setback and the arborist report is very clear that come time should, should, should we be successful that any excavation around those trees has to be supervised. Um, so it's gonna be very carefully handled. Um, with particular note, the, the, the white oak is not in great health, um. And I think that had previously provoked, uh, discussion between the, uh, homeowner and objection and my client. And I think that had previously provoked, uh, discussion between the homeowner and objection and my client. Um, it, it had a substantial, uh, die off and it, and it's borderline viable at this point. So efforts are absolutely being made to look after it, but it's not in good shape. And it's not in my client's interest to damage any of those trees. They value the screen at the rear of the property as much as the homeowners to the north. With regards to the twelve meter setback and the seven point five meter landscape zone. I, I would make the argument that that's, that's onerous, it's unreasonable. We're at the end of the ravine with the back of the garden just catches the end of the, the line of the ravine. And to build anything in that area would, would, wouldn't make sense for the lot, for the house, wouldn't be appropriate. There's already a shed at the very back fence, which we'll be removing. So the buffer zone between ourselves and the ravine, I would make the argument, is improved. And the overall size of the accessory structure. It's, I, I would argue relatively modest, it's the, basically the size of a master bedroom. And it's now being called upon for, for several different uses and it, um. This is a household with young children in it, just so that everybody's clear. Uh, that it's not an Airbnb or, uh, in air quotes, poverty house. So that structure as proposed will be doing quite a bit of work for the house itself.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Hudson, Ms. Hayes?
Thank you. Mr. Hudson, with respect to variance number one. The way that that's worded seems to sug- suggest you're not certainly meeting the landscaping requirement. But from the site plan, you are providing some landscaping to the rear of the proposed accessory structure, correct?
That, that's correct, yeah, the way that site specific, um, bylaw is written is that it, it says not only must you set back. Any proposed building twelve meters, but within that, you must also have seven point five meters of landscape.
Yes.
Which obviously we don't, so we, we will have.
So what is, so is it three meters of landscaping according to site plan? Do you know, okay, so three meters from the rear, uh, yard, okay. Because my concern is the way that the, um, wording of that, that variance. Suggests that should, should the committee decide to approve it, it would almost read that you didn't, you weren't pro- uh, proposing to provide any. So, uh, that's my first concern. Secondly, with respect to the accessory structure, um, not used as a garage. Is there any others of the size that you're suggesting here that you can point us to in the neighborhood?
Um, that, none that are obvious, but I can tell you that forty four next door, um, they have a pool building. It's beautiful, uh, but it runs right the way across the rear of their lot. I don't, it doesn't show up on, on that map, but I, I can tell you from seeing it and you can Google Earth that, that. That, yeah, their neighbor to the east has a building that's closer to the rear lot line. And serves as a pool service room for them, and again, it's been beautifully done.
Did they receive a variance for that?
Uh, I, I couldn't find it, um, and I don't know when it was done, but it's definitely there.
Thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, uh, let's take it into committee. Any comments? Mr. Solomon?
I think that the variances are minor in nature, I think the increase in the size of the proposed, um, accessory building. Is, um, modest, that, and so I would move approval. Um, I would like to add a condition to tie it to the site plan so that it's clear that the site plan does show. Uh, landscaped areas along the rear and in between the accessory building and the main building. And I'm just checking if there's other conditions, uh, urban forestry, number one, I believe.
Okay, so Mr. Solomon moves approval of the application, including forestry condition number one and tying it to site plan. Do I have a second or for that? Mr. Reed? Okay, so all in favor? That carries unanimously, thank you. Item number three, one oh four, one oh four Avenue Road. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, two photographs of trees on the subject property. We have correspondence by email from planning, we have heritage asking for a condition. And we have opposition from eleven A Tran B. Okay, I'm showing, I'm not showing any opposition speakers, do you have the agent on the line?
Lucas Cocomelo, you've been unmuted.
Hi, uh, you guys, does everybody hear me?
Yep, if you can just state your name for the record and also are you speaking on behalf of the owner?
Correct, uh, my name is, uh, Lucas Cocomelo from Cheltenham. Um, I'm here representing the, uh, the homeowner, who's also, uh, is, uh, a speaker on the, uh, on the application.
Right, so is he intending to speak, cause it's five minutes, um, combined?
If, if necessary.
We, we, uh, we actually, I don't know that we even need a presentation, I don't think we do. So, um, I guess if there's questions you can't answer, then we can go to the, uh, owner. Uh, if there are any questions, let me see. Panel member, Ms. Hayes?
Um, what's the existing, uh, FSI split between, on the property?
Uh, existing early onsite?
Yes.
Let me see. I think initially we were at, uh, zero point nine eight times the lot area. So the existing condition was already, uh, the existing floor space was already higher than what, uh. Or was close to what Sony had initially prescribed based on the zone. We, but, like, uh, i- in terms of, uh, how we, uh. Determine these floor space index numbers, we reviewed, uh, what was previously approved within the area. And, uh, well, within, uh, reasonable, uh, terms, uh, the floor space index numbers that we had come up with are. Uh, are less than what has been approved within the area. I understand that, uh, these hearings are based on, uh, property to property. But based on, uh, overall general scope, um, we are proposing something that is, is mi- uh, minor in nature in terms of, uh. Um, what planning is reviewed and at the same time heritage planning as well.
Okay, I was just looking at the site statistics on, um. Oh. Sorry, I have to decrease the size of this, on the, um. Drawings that were submitted. And on the site plan, and, um, it suggests, and this might have been refined subsequent to this. The numbers here say you're looking for, would add up to two point, um, three two. And this is two point two seven, is two point two seven what you're asking for?
Uh, correct.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions, panel members? Okay, Mr. Cocomelo, we're, uh, ready to take it into committee to make a decision, is there anything you wanna add before we do so?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm fine, uh, at the moment.
Okay. All right, panel members, let's take it into committee for a decision. Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Um, I think this is a reasonable application, I think the, the addition to the third floor is, is relatively small in terms of the area. Uh, and, and especially given the context of a, this is a very, um, compact and densely built out area. Uh, I think allowing these variances won't have a negative impact on the neighbors or the neighborhood. So I move approval subject to urban forestry, or sorry, subject to the heritage condition.
Okay, that's seconded by Ms. Hayes. So motion to approve, including the August twenty ninth report from heritage conditions, moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? That carries unanimously, the application's been approved. Item number four, one twenty Emerson Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have a staff report from forestry asking for condition number three. And correspondence expressing concern from one thirty six Armstrong. I do not show any other speakers other than the agent. And we have three variances before us, do I have the agent on the line?
Tony Enrique, you've been unmuted, but I do also see that you're signed on to three different devices, so you'll have to remove the other two devices.
Oh, I, I only have the, the computer logged in, I don't have anything else.
Well, I, you're not echoing, so if you can state your name for the record.
Uh, my name's Tony Henricus, uh, five forty three Concord Avenue, and I'm the agent for this application.
Okay, um, panel members, do you have any questions? Mr. Solomon?
My question relates to the rear soft landscaping, what is the existing, um, rear soft landscaping percentage?
Um, the, uh, rear's, um, yard is, uh. Pretty well all open, but it is interlocked, so there is virtually no landscaping. It was interlocked years ago and back then it was permitted.
So you're actually then increasing the amount of soft landscaping from what's existing?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, Mr. Henricus, um, not seeing any more questions, we're ready to take it into committee to make a decision. Is there anything you wanna add before we go into committee?
No.
Okay. All right, panel members, we're in committee. Ms. Hayes and then Mr. Solomon.
Thanks. Um, looking at the site, I was concerned with respect to the soft landscaping as well, um, I appreciate the, the clarification. In the question from my colleague. When I do look at the site plan and I look at the two neighboring properties, the, I think what's being proposed. Um, in this application would not make the soft landscaping dissimilar to the amount available on either of the neighboring properties. So I don't think it's uncharacteristic and, um, I would move for, if my colleagues have no comment, further comment. I would like to move a motion to, um, approve the application, subject to forestry condition number three.
Okay, did you wanna second Mr. Solomon? Okay, so that motion is moved by Ms. Hayes, seconded by Mr. Solomon, all in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously. Item number five, twenty three North Cliff Boulevard. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have an arborist report prepared by Central Tree Care, presentation photos from the agent. And forestry's asking for condition number two, do I have the agent on the line?
I am here, yes, my name's Craig Ritz of CAR Design Studio, agent for the owners.
Okay, panel members, we have two variances before us, do you have any questions for the agent? Okay, Mr. Reed's, we have no questions, we're ready to take it into committee for a decision, anything you wanna add that's not in the submissions?
I don't believe so, just want to clarify that, uh, item number two, which was for the deck stair, uh, we ended up removing that to make that compliant. Uh, that's why we submitted the, um, this is a zoning waiver, so it's just the two, two variances for the setback. Between the proposed addition and the existing garage, uh, and the very minor, uh, variance for, uh, the height of the proposed re-.
Right, so we have two variances before us here, right? One for the rear platform and, uh, the existing garage setback. Okay, uh, and it, so, uh, we're gonna go into committee then, that was all you wanted to, uh, clarify?
I'm happy to do a, a presentation if you like.
No, no, we don't need one, thank you though. All right, panel members, um, we're in committee, Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, I think, uh, the, the two variances are minor in nature, I would move approval of the variances, subject to urban forestry condition two.
Okay, do I have a second or? Mr. Chang? Okay, so motion to approve, including forestry number two, moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Mr. Chang, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay, item number six, two fifty two Milverton Boulevard. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, we have one variance before us. And do I have the agent or owner on the line? Jeff Vadan?
Jeff Vadan, you've been unmuted.
Thank you very much, uh, Jeff Vadan, I'm, I am the homeowner.
Hi, okay, um, so your address then is two fifty two Milverton Boulevard?
That is correct.
Alrighty, um, I, w- we don't need a presentation on this one, panel members, it's truly minor, uh, any questions for the homeowner? Okay, Mr. Vadan, we're ready to make a decision on this, is there anything you wanna add before we go into committee?
No, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, panel members, we're in committee. Mr. Chang?
I would like to make a motion to approve this application, uh, I think, uh, look at the street view, there are other houses with similar. Design where they're enclosed in the porch and the footprint is the same, so I would like to support this application, it's a very minor, uh, application for me.
Okay, do I have a second or, Ms. Hayes? So a motion to.
I would just, sorry, I'd, would Mr. Chang, um, consider a friendly amendment that it just be limited to the first floor? The front yard setback, just because it's a porch, so that there's no question that it's limited only to that first floor?
Yes, we can limit that only to the first floor.
Okay, I'll second that then, thank you.
Okay, so with that condition, the motion's moved by Mr. Chang, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number seven. Three twenty four Shaw Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations. We have a staff report from planning. And we have, um, a seventh signature petition in support, signed by properties on Shaw Street and Harrison Street. And correspondence in support from three twenty two Shaw. And that's the adjacent property and planning is asking for a condition. Okay, do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, I am Melina Jansen, I'm the agent and I live at four oh nine Shaw Street.
Alrighty, um, panel members, I don't show any other speakers, do you have any questions for the agent? Okay, Ms. Jansen, we don't have any questions, we're ready to take it into committee for a decision, is there anything you wanna add? That's not in the submissions?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to mention that the neighbor, um, to the north, um, is also supportive, I have texts and, and, and emails, unfortunately. They are elderly, have been in Portugal for three months and their daughter had to even set up a Gmail account to, to get them, um, to comment. But the, the owners have kept both neighbors informed from the beginning and they've both been, um, very supportive. Um, I also just wanted to mention that this is, uh, you know, just, well, I can give a presentation if you want, but it's just, uh, one meter. One point oh meters more in length than what they have now and many properties have, uh, much greater length in the area. Um, so I'm happy to talk more to that if needed.
Um, no, I don't, I don't believe there are any questions, um, you are aware of the planning, planning conditions?
Yes.
Okay. All right, panel members, let's take it into committee for a decision then. Uh, Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, I think that the variances are minor in nature, the addition is small and the FSI is already, um. At a high, uh, level, so the, the variances are minor and I would move approval, subject to community planning conditions.
Seconded by Ms. Hayes, so motion to approve, including the August twenty third reports, planning conditions. planning conditions moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number eight, two-eighty-eight Ozzington Avenue. We have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans and Elevations. We have email correspondence from Transportation, they don't have any concerns. And I am showing one speaker here, uh, other than the agent.
Good morning, everyone.
Hi.
My name's Harry Williams, I'm the owner of the property.
Okay, I do have, um, a speaker listed, you have them on the line. Um, and they have a concern, so, if, um, we can either have you do a presentation first, or we can ha- ask, go to the, uh, person to find out the concerns, and you can speak to those, if you like, it's up to you.
Yes, uh, I'd love to do a presentation.
All right, so, we'll start the clock now, then?
Right, so this is a two-eighty-eight, yeah, uh, Ozzington Avenue, quite a busy area, and then we purchased the property a year ago, so the property initially was granted, uh, as a single-family house with a basement, sec- secondary basement suite, back in two thousand and three. So, i- this property is, uh, detached, and then, uh, with a secondary suite. So, what we're trying to do is, this is a three-story property, so to ma- convert the top floor and the second floor as a separate unit, so that would make, single-family house with two secondary suites. Uh, we also need to add the, uh, separate entrance at the front, because the existing entrance can only be shared between the, uh, one unit, so that will combine in second and third floor. So, in order to have like, the first floor as a separate unit, we need to have like, a second access, so that's what we are proposing.
Okay, um, why don't we go to the opposition, it's the adjacent neighbor, and then we'll have you back to address the concerns raised.
Maria Prentis, you've been unmuted. And your video is enabled.
Hello?
Hi.
Oh, sorry, um, I'm on the phone.
Hello?
Yeah, hi.
Hi, okay.
Can you hear me?
I can, I need you to state your name and address, for the record, please.
Maria Prentis, two-eight-six Ozzington Avenue.
Okay, hi Maria, you have five minutes to let us know what your concerns are.
Um, I'm just wondering about the construction, how long it'll take? Um, uh, will it encroach in any way into our prop- my property?
Okay, those are, uh, I'll, I'll ask them to be addressed really quick. Those are not concerns that the, um, this committee deals with, we only deal with the actual variances being requested. But, let me just, uh, quickly go to Mr. Williams, and see if he can just, um, maybe work all this out with you. Um, Mr. Williams, are you there?
Yes, uh, thank you very much, so, once again, yes, uh, we will try to make it as easy as possible, this construction, and then we're not going to encroach anywhere at all, and I, I believe I spoke to Maria recently, we're sharing the, uh, so, on that, my property lot, there's a alleyway, which is currently shared between two-eight-six and two-eight-eight, but legally belongs to ours. So, her concern was, if she's still gonna be able to use it, and I said, I don't mind, because at the end of the day, it's been there for a while, and then that doesn't concern me, and they can still use it to access their backyard, when they pick up the, I mean, drop off the, you know, gu- waste. So, other than that, I have no issues at all, so we will ma- make it as, you know, as smooth as possible.
Okay.
Okay.
And, and maybe you can have ongoing dialogue, as things start moving? All right, um, thank you very much. Panel members, do you have any questions? Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, if we can just put up the site plan. My question relates to the front yard, and it shows on the site plan as existing hardscape area. Um, do you have any permeable material in the front yard area?
Uh, no, no materials, um.
So, are you able, are you able to, um, convert the existing hardscape area to permeable material?
That's correct.
So, if we put a condition on, you're able to fulfill that condition?
That's correct, yes, we can do that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? All right, let's take it into committee for a decision, then. Mr. Reed?
Thanks Chair. Um, thanks Nimrod for raising the, uh, the front yard landscaping question, that was my concern as well. Uh, I think, I think the application itself is very reasonable, and makes sense, um, particularly given the busy nature of the area, and, um, there are many buildings with multiple units in it, and I think this will fit in nicely. Um, my, my one concern was the lack of soft landscaping in the front yard, but I think that if we add a condition to that effect, that, that'll help it. So, I, I move approval of the application, with the condition that, on the site plan, the area, um, marked existing hardscape be constructed with permeable pavers, or with permeable materials.
Okay, so, do I have a seconder, uh, Ms. Hayes? So, the motion with the condition for the hardscape in the front to be changed to permeable pavers, that's shown on the site plan, moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? That carries unanimously, thank you very much. Um, item number nine was deferred, item number ten, one-forty-seven Dowling Avenue. We have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans and Elevations. We have a covering letter from the owners, and a previous decision affecting the subject property. We have one variance before us, do I have the agent on the line?
Hi, this is Monica DePont, I'm the owner, um, our architect i- is away, but I will be speaking to this.
Okay, Monica, I don't think we need a presentation on this, let me see if there are any questions.
Thank you.
Uh, we don't have any questions, we're ready to make a decision on this. Is there anything that you want to add, that's not in your covering letter?
No, that's in my covering lever- letter, um, described the situation appropriately.
Okay, thank you. All right, panel members, we are in committee. Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, I think that the proposed third-floor addition is small, and the variance is minor, and I would move approval with no conditions.
Okay, do I have a seconder for that? Ms. Hayes, so, a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number eleven, one-twenty-one Harcourt Avenue. We have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans and Elevations. We have an arborist report, prepared by Wellwind Consulting, presentation materials from the agent, and we have correspondence from Planning, asking for a condition. Okay, uh, do I have the agent on the line?
Yes, Arlene Beaumont, Ochre and Associates, I'm the agent for the owners of one-twenty-one Harcourt Avenue.
Okay, just give me one second here, my papers. All right, do you, uh, one second, do you have this person? Okay, uh, Ms. Beaumont, I'm just gonna go, I have a speaker list, and I'm not really sure if they're in opposition, it's, it's kind of unclear here, so I'm just gonna find out.
Actually, um, just wanted to understand what, what the project was, the scope of the project, and then, offer some commentary, I'm, I'm the neighbor two doors over at one-one-seven Harcourt.
Okay, um, so, your name, your name, we didn't get your name.
It's Donnie Mangos.
Okay, Mr. Mangos, I'll, uh, ask Ms. Beaumont to do a brief presentation, and then I'll come back to you, and at that point-
Thank you.
-you can state your concerns. Okay, go ahead, Ms. Beaumont, you have five minutes, and the clock's starting now.
Thank you very much, um, so, the next slide, this, uh, shows the site location. Um, we are south of Den, fourth west of Jones, and the pat property backs onto Earl Gray Senior Public School. Uh, my client is proposing to build a new three-story dwelling, uh, with a basement suite on the property. Fourteen variances are required, um, I'm, obviously, that seems like a big number. Um, three of the, uh, variances are related to an existing, um, building or structure, it's kind of a garage, carport structure, that's located at the back of the lot, and she would like to retain, um, that building. Um, there's also two, um, uh, variances for, they're related to the side yard, um, three variances related to height, um, and, and of course, some other variances, including one for, um, parking, there's no parking space provided, that is also an existing condition. Uh, next slide, please. So, here is, uh, the existing dwelling, next slide, please. And you can see the existing streetscape, so we have this little tiny, one-story dwelling, uh, in between two, um, you know, obviously, much larger, two-and-a-half-story dwellings. Next slide, please. Uh, this is the, uh, dwelling that my, um, client is proposing to, uh, construct. I just want to make note that we do have a variance for, um, a, um, uh, door to, uh, the basement apartment, in the front, uh, of the, of the dwelling, but it is actually entirely below grade, so you can't see the door, it's not a prominent feature on the outside of the home. Next slide, please. Um, this is the existing site plan, um, and the Harcourt is located to the, um, north. I'd just like to point out a couple of things, first of all, the existing home is approximately twenty-two centimeters, or point two-two meters, from the east side lot. We are proposing a slight increase to that, so we're proposing point two-nine meters from the side lot, from the east side lot. Um, I also wanted to just point out, the neighbor on the, um, left-hand side has constructed a garage, that is a shared driveway between the two dwellings. He has constructed a garage, so my client currently cannot access her garage, which is at the very back of the lot, uh, thank you, um, because the neighbor has constructed the, um, his garage on the shared, on the shared driveway, she, she has no access to her garage, and she has no on-street parking, or sorry, no on-site parking right now. Next slide, please. So, this is our proposed site plan, again, I just want to emphasize that, uh, we are improving the east side yard setback by a few centimeters, and there is still, um, uh, room, if the neighbor were to ever remove that garage, to, to access or move his garage, there would still be room, uh, for that shared driveway. Next, uh, next slide, please. I just wanted to provide, uh, some pictures of some care comparables, and every home I'm showing you is within steps of the subject property. So, this is one-thirty-seven Harcourt, again, a three-story, very modern-looking home. Next slide, please. This is one-oh-six Harcourt, again, uh, flat roof, three-story home. Next slide, please. Uh, this home at one-eleven Harcourt, from the street, it appears to be a slope-proof dwelling, but as you can see from the side, it is actually a three-story, uh, flat roof dwelling. Next slide, please. And this, um, obviously, is an interesting one, uh, looks like someone did add a third story to an ex- um, to an existing, uh, two-story, uh, semi-detached dwelling. Next slide, please. So, uh, this very, this neighborhood is very much in transition, lots of building going on, even new builds or additions to existing homes. Over the last, uh, ten years, there's been two-hundred variance applications in the area. The variances that we're requesting are, uh, many are related to existing conditions, the side yard, the express accessory building, the parking space, um, a- a- and we believe that the height variance is, is point three-two, uh, sorry, thirty-two centimeters, or point three-two meters over the permitted. Um, the F S I is very much in keeping with other new builds in the neighborhood, and we just feel that this home really does fit, this is a very eclectic neighborhood, lots going on, different styles of homes, different ages of homes, and, um, this, this house is going to fit very well. Plus, we have the, um, um, advantage of offering, you know, a basement suite, something that could be rental housing in the neighborhood. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the front entrance to that rental suite is below grade, and will not be a main feature of the belt dwelling, and we think it'll be an attractive addition to the streetscape, and it will fit in much nicer between those two, two-and-a-half-story dwellings than the existing little one-story dwelling does, so it'll, it, it'll really improve the streetscape in that location. We are in receipt of planning, the planning condition, and the-
Sorry, I, uh, it cut out when you said we are in receipt of a planning condition, and then I just couldn't hear any more audio after that. Still can't hear anything, hmm, wonder if it's me? Okay.
Uh, there it is. Am I, can you hear me?
I do, yep.
My, I, my client is fine with it, fine with the condition.
All right, I can't, so I just wanted to see what that is, opaque privacy screening on fence, that is permanent, okay? Um, no, I think it's great, uh, the house that you showed in there, um, one-eleven, it's actually one-seventeen, that's my house. It's, it's not a flat roof, it, it is a pitch, it's a gentle pitch, but it's also, yeah, that one, it's, um, it's a metal roof that is on a slow pitch, I'm, because it's a big dormer, so it is a three-story. Um, but I don't, also think that there's, seventy-nine Harcourt is something you should consider, it's, it's certainly along the lines of what you're building, and it, and it's certainly, like, uh, you know, a square structure, flat roof, in the neighborhood, so I don't disagree at all with, uh, with the comments made. The only thing is the parking, so you're pulling off the parking from, from one, uh, twenty-one parking, there's, there currently is parking on there, the, the gentleman that lives there now does park, so that, that'll be removed, and it'll just be parking on the street, then? Is that correct?
Madam Chair, we, we do not hear you, in case you're speaking.
Oh, sorry about that, so, um, if you can state all your concerns, Mr. Mangos, and then Ms. Beaumont can answer them? When she comes back? We, we usually don't have a, a kind of back and forth, it's sort of-
Fair.
Yeah?
I understand, so, I just, I, my concern is just on the parking side. We were, it, it looks like we're removing an existing parking space that is being used by the current tenant that lives there, and removing that, which is going to put just more cars in the road, um, and it's a little bit of a tight squeeze, as is on the street. So, could you just address, uh, that question, is parking being removed from this property?
Okay, anything else, because once, once-
Nope.
Okay, all right, okay, thanks. Okay, Ms. Beaumont, go ahead, if you can answer the, the parking question, and, um, I did hear you're okay with the planning condition.
Hi there, uh, yes, sorry, can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, thank you, um, yes, so, according to my client, the owner of the property, she cannot get her car into the rear yard, because the neighbor's garage is in the way. Um, I don't know what kind of a car the tenant has, my, uh, and I would like to also note that, um, my neighbor i- um, does have, uh, wasn't an accident, she does have some, um, disability issues, and she has, um, a, a parking pass, like one of those, um, uh, you know, handicapped parking passes, um, but she cannot get her car, and she would like to be able to get her car into the rear yard, but she cannot do so.
Okay, let me see if the panel, Mr. Solomon, has a question for you.
Yeah, can you just, um, indicate to us, what is the accessory building being used for? It is quite large, like forty-one square meters?
Yes, it is, I understand that she wants to, it is, um, and I've seen pictures, it is, is quite a nice, uh, building. She wants to, um, have a little yoga studio for herself in there, and then there's that, the covered arbor is sort of just a place to sit in the rear yard, in the shade. Um, so, she does like, it's a nice little, uh, structure, and she does want to keep it, it won't be used for a garage, it's a yoga stu- studio kind of thing.
Thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? Ms. Hayes?
From the site plan, the depth that you're requesting appears to be, um, much deeper than the properties on both sides. What is the, um, what is the difference in depth of, uh, or what is the depth of the neighboring homes, do you know?
I don't know the depth of the neighboring homes, I believe we're asking, um, for about eighteen and change, let me just tell you exactly.
You're, you're, you're asking for eighteen point eight-seven?
That's correct.
And the bylaw allows seventeen?
Seventeen, so we're one-point eight-seven. More than what the bylaw would permit.
Is there any other properties in the neighborhood that have depth variances, or depth similar to what you're requesting?
Um, I, I don't know specifically, I, but there are some, you know, larger properties in the neighborhood, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? Okay, let's take it into committee, then. Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, just as a comment, um, I, I did have some concerns with the depth variance that was being requested, but I haven't seen any, um, concerns or oppositions raised from the, uh, two abutting neighbors, so, um, you know, I, I think then that- So um, you know, I I think then that 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 variance would be minor.
Anyone else? Any comments? Okay, Mr. Solomon.
Yeah, I think although there are quite a few variances, I think they are in totality uh minor in nature. Um, I would move approval, subject to community planning conditions.
Okay, do I, Mr. Reed seconds, so motion to approve, including the planning condition, moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor? That carries unanimously, thank you. Item number twelve, twenty-one Saint Clair Avenue East. We have before us copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a covering letter from the agent. And I don't show any other speakers other than the agent. Do I have the agent on the line?
You do, yes.
And you are?
My name is Kevin Pirak. Uh, I'm here representing the owner of the property.
Um, okay, I'm sorry, you said your name is, I have somebody else listed here. I have Joanna Shapiro, yeah, so you are, you're Kevin, sorry, what's your last name again?
Pirak, P-I-R-A-K. I I reached out to the city about a month ago, and we changed it. Jo- Joanna works with me at the same firm.
Okay, no worries, I just wanted to get the right name for the record. I don't know that we need a presentation. Um, panel members, do you have any questions? No? Okay, uh, Kevin, we have no questions, we're ready to make a decision on this one. Is there anything you want to add before we take it into committee?
No, thank you.
Okay, we're in committee, panel members. Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Uh, I think this is a very minor variance is being requested. I think it's just adding uh adding some new permitted uses to a mixed building, and I I think this is just a result of maybe overly specific antiquated zoning. Um, I can see no negative impacts of allowing these types of uses in this building. So I move approval of the application with no conditions.
All right, Ms. Hayes, you're seconding, so motion to approve, moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Item number thirteen, fifteen Rebecca Street. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, two photographs of trees on the property, correspondence from number eleven, and uh I do have an a speaker listed, again, not sure if they're in opposition or not.
Through you, Madam Chair, I do not have them registered, and they haven't provided a phone number, so there's no way for me to call them into the hearing.
All right, so we only have the owner listed then as a speaker. Um, okay, do I have the owner on the line?
Hello?
Hello, Mr. Fam?
Hello?
Hi.
Yeah, speaking.
Hi, I just, I
Okay, I'm the owner.
Yeah, I just need you, can you start by stating your name and address for the record?
Okay, uh, hi, uh, my name is David Fam, I'm the owner of fifteen Rebecca Street.
Okay, sir, um, we have, we have, hang on, we have one variance before us, panel members. I don't think we need a presentation. Do you have any questions for Mr. Fam? Mr. Solomon, Mr. Fam, one of the members has a question for you.
Yeah, are you um proposing to put privacy screening on the two sides of the rear deck?
Privacy screenings in in what sense, sir? Well, the the deck is regular, like three-and-a-half feet tall.
Yeah, so I, the mem- the member's asking if you're gonna put some kind of like screening on the side so that you don't have an overlook problem with your neighbors.
Okay, uh, right now, my intention was not to do so because the neighbor on the west side is okay with it. He put in a um, he said he was gonna put in something to say that he was okay with it. The neighbor on the east side is a derelict uh property. We can't contact that lady uh because it's rundown and it's decrepit. Uh, and the and the backing of that goes on to the parking lot of a storage unit. So the parking lot of a storage unit, so there's no um privacy issues that I'm aware of at this time.
Mr. Solomon, any anything else, I mean?
I think we did hear, we did receive a letter from, I believe, number eleven, uh, which
Yes.
raised a concern and did ask about the privacy screening.
Oh, he didn't tell me about that, okay. Well, if it's required of me to do so, because his doesn't have a privacy screen either, but if if you do require me to do something of that sort, then I will do it. So basically, the whole thing was that I I purchased the 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 unit, the property. It's it's the middle of a three-row house, and I made it into two units, and the upstairs units needs to put their garbage somewhere. And um, they the city would not allow me to put in a garbage unit in the front, like a garbage storage unit, um, because they said my property only ended twelve inches from my property line, whereas all one-three-five-eleven um Rebecca have their properties all the way to the to the uh sidewalk. So I had no place for my ten- for my um tenant to to put his garbage. So that was the intention of that, of the deck.
Okay, so if the committee decides to put a condition on for screening, you would be okay with that?
Yes, i- if I have to put it, then then I will do so.
Okay. Any other questions, panel members? Okay, sir, we don't have any more questions, we're ready to make a decision. Anything else you want to add?
Uh, no, I I, that's the main purpose of the for the deck, for to store garbage.
Okay. All right, let's take it into committee for a decision. Ms. Hayes?
Thank you, I think what's being proposed is indeed minor. Um, however, uh, given the tightness of the proximity of the decks and the overlook, and also now that they're being used for garbage storage, uh, I would um like to move a motion to approve the variances, subject to privacy screening on both sides of the deck to a minimum of one point five meters.
All right, uh, do I have a second, or? Mr. Reed, I think beat you by a second. It's on the east and west sides, so? On the east and west sides, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, so motion to approve uh one point five meter screening on the east and west side of the deck, moved by Ms. Hayes, seconded by Mr. Reed, all in favor? Okay, that carries unanimously. Item number fourteen, twenty-one hundred to twenty-one-ten Young Street, as well as eight to twelve Manor Road West. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, a covering letter from the agent, bylaw affecting the subject property, uh, council decision affecting the subject property, a zoning waiver from the agent, a letter recommending approval from the local counselor, and we have support from the Oriole Park Association, as well as the South Eglinton Davisville Residents Association. Do I have the agent on the line?
Yes.
Hi, I'm just confused with my note here, Kath, is this Annalise?
This is Annalise Salongo, Catherine Randall is also um here today if needed to help answer any questions.
Okay, that was my question, doesn't really say why the name's here. All right, um, I'm not sure we need a presentation. Um, panel members, do you need a presentation? No, do you have any questions for the agent? No? Well, we have no questions, we're actually ready to make a decision on this. Uh, we have one variance before us, panel members, so um, Ms. Salongo, anything you want to add that's not in the submissions that uh before we make a decision on this?
Um, there is just one item, um, I believe on the agenda, there do- it does say that the owner is Serenade Homes, Inc.
Um, yeah, it does.
Yeah, that was changed back in two thousand and eighteen, so maybe let's just correct that for the record. Um, it's Rockport, Young and Manor, Inc. I can also write that into the committee as well, if necessary.
Okay, so it's Rockport?
Yep, and then Young.
Sorry, i- it cut out for a second, Rockport?
Rockport, Young.
Young, okay.
And Manor.
And Manor.
Inc.
Inc. Okay, staff, can you correct that? Do you need an email sent or anything? Um, no, how long ago did you say you sent this in?
Um, it hap- the the name change was twenty-eighteen, so I'm not sure if just the city system automatically picked up the prior name.
Yeah. Yeah, possibly.
Still overall the same owner as Rockport, but just wanted to make sure that it captures a current one.
Okay, thanks.
No problem.
So yeah, the correction will me be made, I don't think they need any further emails. Do you, Sylvia? Oh, she's actually, if you can just stand by, she's just checking the system.
No problem.
Can you find it? Okay, it still says Serenade, so we'll we'll um, they'll get that fixed again.
It's just for our records, not for the city records.
So do you need something sent in elsewhere?
Uh, the owner would have to contact um the best through um taxes to update any records, because I I don't know where your tax bills are being sent. They could be still sent to Serenade Homes, I don't know. But it's whatever is in our system. Uh, um, it doesn't show the Rockport as the owner.
Okay, no problem.
Contact tax at a minimum.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so uh that was what you wanted to uh just say for the record before we go into
That was the only item.
All right, thanks. Okay, panel members, let's take it into committee for a decision. Ms. Hayes?
Thanks, um, having reviewed all the material on file, um, firstly, I was uh given the push to have more family-friendly units and more three-bedroom units, I was actually uh somewhat surprised at submission, but having reviewed the material that was before council and the decision of city council and the counselor's letter, I believe that the applicant has satisfied that um what is being proposed here is appropriate, and I would move a motion to approve the the variances with no conditions.
All right, do I have a second or for that? Mr. Chang? So motion to approve, moved by Ms. Hayes, seconded by Mr. Chang, all in favor? This carries unanimously, thank you. Item number fifteen, two oh-one Salmon Avenue. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, seven signan- signature petition in support from owners and occupants of properties on Donlands and Salmon Avenues, correspondence in expressing concerns from one fifty-four Donlands, as well as one ninety-nine Salmon. And I'm showing two speakers in opposition, do we have them both?
Through you, Madam Chair, I could not uh obtain contact with the owner of one ninety-nine Salmon, just the person for one fifty-four Donlands Avenues on standby.
Okay, thank you. Do you have Mr. Avsal on the line? Avsal?
Uh, hi, hi, good morning.
Good morning, can you state your name for the record, please?
My name is Mohammed Afzal, and uh, two hundred one Salmon Avenue.
Okay, so um, Ms. Hayes has an interest, so she's not going to be sitting in on this one. So can you uh, I have somebody in opposition, can you do a brief presentation, sir? No more than five minutes.
Yeah, this is a uh, the this is the proposal for uh enclosing the existing porch at the front and legalizing the asbit one-story addition at the uh rear of the house, that also include a roof canopy uh in front of uh the existing rear door entrance to the basement. The city zoning staff reviewed the drawings and provided zoning review comments. The following are non-compliant issues, but the uh but most of them, and I I would say all of them are uh because of the existing or asbit condition. The comments are uh, a first comment is about the uh, the rear yard, the side yard setback of concrete deck in front of the basement entrance is point six-two, about two feet, uh, whereas the requirement is point nine meter. But the actual building also has the same setback, point six-two meter. Uh, the other thing is uh the rear yard, uh yard soft landscaping. It is twenty-one percent of the rear yard area, which is around my T-square meter. Uh, but the requirement is twenty-five percent. And you look at the site plan, which is in front of me, you can see that the most of the rear yard is occupied by the right-of-way to the neighbor on the west side, and also uh semi uh part, what we call it, a gravel-laid area for the two parking spaces of the owner. And there's a bit little by little space where we are providing a one-story addition, and there is a small deck and stair leading to that addition. So actually, there is no space to provide more grass there. And it is unfortunate, but uh this is due to the site condition. Okay, the next uh is, third number is light, light coverage. Light coverage has exceeded the minimum, uh, the maximum thirty-five percent. It is forty-two point seven percent, and this is, this is due to enclosing the front yard, and uh, the uh, the family has told me the situation, and probably they have ex- they have expressed this thing in their letter as well. Their family consists of five people, and there are two very related persons. Their their good sport is upon this family. So this is small house, and they need some extra space. And mostly this po- space, if it is used for the storage or other things, then they can use the the equivalent space uh in the main building for their amenities. So this is about the front yard back, the front yard porch enclosing. And uh, the other thing is uh for some, but the front yard setback is one point five meter. Yeah, this this is because of the sta- uh, because enclosing the porch, had it not been enclosed and it it remained as a porch, then there would not have been any problem. When once we enclose, it becomes part of the building, and then the building setback back applied to it. A side yard setback at the front addition is but a three-meter requirement is point a three-meter, uh, sorry, I miss something, uh. The side yard back, side yard setback at the front addition is point eight-three meter. The requirement is one nine meter. This is this is this uh, this setback, yeah. And this is, this setback is also due to the location of the existing porch, which uh, which is now being converted into covered space.
Okay, you're on, you have ten seconds left.
So the, uh, we have, if you, uh, we have checked this uh proposal, and we believe this is according to the vast plan of the city, and this is according to the Zemini by law, and this is minor uh variance.
Okay.
And this is also desirable, and it will provide better use of it.
Okay, sir, we're gonna hear from the opposition, and then we'll have you back again to answer uh any questions that the opposition had and to address their concerns. Okay.
Hello?
Hi, Mister Kwan?
Hi, uh, my name is Dennis Kwan, um, I'm representing the homeowner of one fifty-four Donlands Avenue. My relationship with the homeowner is, uh, he is my father and he does not speak English. Um, my main concern in regards to the, uh, variances are primarily related to, um. Item number two, uh, about the, um, minimum twenty-five percent landscaping. Uh, I'm not quite sure if, um, I can provide, um, photos, but, um. Basically, um, my concern is that, um, by turning the, the area into a paved area, I believe it's already been paved. Um, there's a displacement of water from that area to, um, what is depicted in the application as lot two. Um, is it possible to bring that up, um, within the, uh?
Are, are these the pictures you sent in with your, uh, correspondence?
Um, yes, but I would, I would like to depict it on their, um, their requested variance, um, um. Layout, if, if possible.
Oh, the site plan, you mean?
Yes, yes, the site plans.
Alright.
Just quickly, Dennis, you've elected to, uh, use your video, so you can enable that if you wish to do so going forward.
Um, I'm okay, thank you very much. So, uh, my property is one fifty-four Donlands, it is, uh, or my property is the bottom left, um, neighbor's garage. In the area known as lot two, um, basically, um, there's an elevation difference and our concern, our ongoing concern, uh, for. At least, I'm representing myself as one fifty-four Donlands, but my neighbor, one fifty-six Donlands should, uh, is also, um, affected by this way, whether or not they, um. Oppose or, uh, raise their concern is another, um, issue entirely. Um, but basically, um, can we bring up the photos that I have submitted, if possible?
Sure.
So, if we scroll down here, um, so this is the lot. Um. Did I submit these photos?
No, no, you're sure, it's two oh one Salmon, it's in the correspondence, the corso- uh, so we're just getting it now.
Okay, um, okay, so basically, um, there's specifically related to rainwater and winter, um, there's an in, in. Uh, there's basically a increase of water, um, that basically sits in the area. Um, and my concern is with their added, um, paid, like, the continued pavement area, um, the water is in. Basically is displaced towards lot two, and that water is basically rising to a level where it enters my garage. And the one fifty-six's garage and. Um, we do not want more, uh, displacement of water because the, uh, the water levels will basically enter our garage. And in terms of winter time, it would freeze and we would not be able to exit our garage. Um, in addition to that, um. There's also the issue with snow, um, and that is our primary concern. So as you can see, this was taken on August twenty-second, uh, I believe, one or two weeks ago during after thirty minutes of rainfall. Um, as you can see, um, this is the area that is, uh, specified as lot two. Um. If you can go down one more. Um, this is the, this is the, um, a photo taken from the inside of my garage, as you can see, um, the water is basically. Right at the line where our garage is, our concern is any additional displacement of water. Um, would basically have water enter our garage and then towards our property. Um, in their site plan, I believe, on, on the PDF, it was page eight. Um, of, of their additional structure, they also have a proposed gutter. And that proposed gutter, I don't, I don't fully understand, um, architect drawings, but my understanding is, I don't know where that water is being displaced. And if that water is being displaced towards, um, lot two, then I have additional concerns in terms of additional, um. Water issues towards the property. Um, in terms of, uh, my photo, uh, my photos, if, can we go to figure one point three? Um, if we can zoom that in, um, so this is a photo taken from my garage, um, towards the laneway. Um, as you can see, um, one fifty-sixth Donlands Avenue, their garage is, um, also right there, uh, where that water is. Um, and I, although they have not, um, addressed or, or being represented today, I would also like to bring that up, uh, for discussion. Uh, or at least, um, in terms of, um, bringing it to your attention. Um, that is my main concern, my, um, if we go back to fig- um, could we go to figure two, please?
Um, you have twenty seconds left, roughly.
Okay, fig- uh, figure two is basically depict, um, uh, that's figure one point two, uh, figure two, this is one day after, um, but the water is still there. My concern is basically winter and, yeah, I wanna know if this can be addressed. And if it isn't addressed, I would like to oppose the vari- uh, for the variances because. Um, I am thinking that there is basically additional damage or, um, to, to the property, basically.
Okay, thank you, Mister Kwan.
Thank you.
Um, panel members, any questions of the speaker? No? Okay, thank you, sir, Mister Afsol, you there?
Afsol, hello?
Can you speak only to the issues raised now?
Uh, what I understood, uh, uh, most of the problems stem from, uh. Water being stagnant during rain. And, uh, if you look at the location map, you will see that, uh, this area. Between these, uh, ma- uh. Oh, this, uh, the, the garage side and, uh, the, uh, between garage side and two hundred one Salmon. This whole area is paved and this pavement is probably fifty, sixty-year-old. With the passage of time due to elemental effects, uh, uh, agents. Uh, there should have a lot of pathos there, as part of this pavement would have been shattered. I, I would say it need resurfacing, it need proper drainage, drainage. And they needed to hold all of the party, uh, people who share this driveway. And also the, the right-of-way passing through two hundred one to one ninety-nine. All these area need to be, uh, properly leveled. And, uh, the slope should be set and that need to be paired. Through, through mutual agreement and mutual contribution between all those people who benefit from this paved area. Regarding, regarding, uh, the, the impact of, uh, surface flow. Due to this construction would be very small and, uh, only. Uh, forty, sixty, uh, uh, four, four percent, uh, landscape, uh, soft landis- landscaping. Which, which we are deficient. Had we provided that even then, the, this would not have impacted too much to the overall rainfall. To the, this paved area. I think, I think all the, all the neighbors who benefit from this paved area. They need to get together and they need to find a solution. And this, uh, and this is, uh. Uh, something which is more than a social, uh, and, uh, the metro adjustment, uh. Uh, issue before metro adjustment is only to allow four percent. Uh, deficiency and the, uh, drain area of this lot. Regarding the, uh, roof drainage, the drainage of the new area roof would be from, uh. Would be to the rear yard, not on the side. And there is a roof over hand toward one ninety-nine with. I will eliminate when I submit the application for building permit, thank you.
Okay, panel members, any questions? Mister Reed?
Thanks, Chair, um, yes, a question for the applicant, um, what, what are you planning to have? For the parking spaces in the rear, um, are you planning on paving those or retaining them as, um. I guess it's kind of like stoned us there now, wha- what is, what are your plans for the parking spaces?
It should not be paved, concrete paved, it should be, uh, uh, like we call it, uh.
Sorry, I don't, can you please, can you speak clearly, I have no idea what you just said.
Yeah, the, the question is about the pavement, the parking, uh, parking spaces. Uh, of two, uh, two or three Salmon. And I would say if it is a crushed gravel, it is better than having a, this is pavement. Because that would absorb the, uh, the surface flow.
So is it gonna be crushed gravel or pavement?
No, it will, it would be crushed gravel.
It will be crushed gravel, that's what's there now.
Yeah, it, it is better than having, uh, pavement, yeah. It will help, it will help flow control, it will help, uh, control the flow of the.
Any other questions, Mister Solomon?
Yeah, so I just wanna clarify, the site plan drawing detail shows that the parking area is to be paved area. So is that, that's not correct?
Uh, that's not correct, I would correct it, it, it should not, uh, because, uh, when I. When I listen these comments from, uh, the neighbor. And when I realized that, uh, because now I, I, I am told that there is a water sliding. Water, the water, uh, uh, cl- collection issues and water drainage issues. So, and that's now you, I would recommend to make that, uh, that area a percolator. Uh, the medium, so it could absorb the, a part of the surface flow.
Sir, can, sir, can you confirm whether or not there's asphalt below the gravel? Because that's what it says on, on one of the submissions.
Yeah, I, I, even if it is asphalt, I would ask the owner to replace it with a crust.
Uh, sorry, uh, can you repeat that, please?
Even, even if it is asphalt, I would ask the, the owner of two hundred three to replace it with a crust on gravel.
Okay, but if the, if there's, if there's asphalt underneath it, then nothing's gonna get through anyway if you put gravel on top of it.
So they will remove it, if it is, they will remove it.
Okay.
Uh, but the, but the basic, basic issue is the resurfacing of this whole area. The setting the proper slope of this area. And this should be done through a collective action of all those people, all those parties who benefit the, uh, uh. With this driveway, uh, right of way.
Madam Deputy Secretary Treasurer, if we were to entertain a condition to remove any asphalt. And then, they're saying they're gonna have gravel on top of it. In, in one of the submissions, it says clearly there's, uh, there's asphalt below the current gravel. How, how can we address that in a condition?
Yeah, but, but.
Hang on, I'm, I'm talking to the Deputy Secretary Treasurer at the moment.
And this is for the two parking spaces.
Yeah. In the, it's, it's the rear. Um. I mean, it's basically, it, it's. Saying the entire rear is like that.
Yeah, well, you have a bit of the right-of-way to go to the, the neighbor's garage, um. So we have a variance to deal with soft landscaping. Um. I guess the, you can just simply say the asphalt in the rear yard shall be replaced with, um. Gravel or s- something permeable perhaps, permeable material.
Okay. Any other questions, panel members? Alright, um, let's take it into committee for a decision. Mister Reed?
Thanks, Chair, um. I think that the application itself is, is straightforward, and I, I don't have any concerns with the variances being requested, but. I think as the neighbors have shown, there, there is, there is a drainage issue in the back, so I think that in order to. Not make that worse, um, I think we have to. Consider, um, a condition as we were discussing before, so I, I think, as I said, the, the variances are minor. And I think their impacts are, are negligible, so I'd move approval subject, subject to the condition that the two parking spaces in the rear. Um. Have, be constructed with gravel or some other permeable material. Um, and that the existing asphalt be removed. I think Sylvia said it a lot more.
I think the, the way that, that we, that Sylvia stated it is because when I look at the submission from the, uh, one of the pictures. It says there that the entire rear yard is asphalt, so, so I think Sylvia had it that the asphalt in the rear yard to be repl- uh, replaced with permeable material.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so with that condi- Mister Solomon, you're on mute, I think, like I was earlier.
Can we, um, add a further condition, uh, variance number four, which re- deals with the front yard. Really applies to the enclosure of the front porch, and so can we limit that, uh, that variance to the ground floor, the, the first floor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so with those conditions then, so condition to, um. Variance number four to be limited to the first floor, condition for asphalt in the rear yard to be replaced with permeable material. Moved by Mister Reed, seconded by Mister Solomon, all in favor? Okay, that carries, okay, can we take five minutes and then Ms. Hayes will be back in five? So we'll be back at, um, eleven twenty-one. Okay.
Yeah, it was quite warm when I, this morning, now I can feel the chill, but I brought a sweater this time.
Well, I've decided I'm moving to England, I think. Waiting to, uh, Archie's changed so much, every time I see pictures, it's like.
Yeah. After today's hearing, I, I have a little, something to tell you.
Hmm, okay.
Okay.
I guess you never, you've never heard from Anita?
Um, I have actually, yeah, I saw her earlier this year, yeah, she's good.
She adjusting or the adjuster thing, I know she went on her sees, she's brand new stuff.
Yeah, she's done a bit of, she went to Croatia, I think, again, yeah, and then she's been to Montreal a couple of times, yeah. She's, um, yeah, she's keeping busy, I guess, uh. She's done some house renovation in her bathroom or something, yeah.
Now she emailed once and I'm, I haven't heard from her since, but I haven't initiated either, I mean, I'm, you know, in.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
I will say shit, so, but it's been, uh, about six months and I don't know, but we'll, we'll see. So.
Maybe you heard from Lisa?
I talked to Lisa, yeah, when did I talk to her, she's a couple of weeks ago already. Yeah, she misses us, but it was just too much. The final straw was, uh, gender, I think I told you, it was the, when I was in Italy, I saw emails, like, they couldn't log in, and, and between helping her parents, downsizing, beginning with Kizor, and I was working full-time, that was like the final straw. Cause it was already, it was already.
In the motion, kind of.
Yeah, it was already a lot, and then, just kind of, so, I, I was, I missed her too, or we got, she was great, but are they gonna bother replacing?
I don't think so, I mean, your term's up in December.
Yeah, but only here, I'm guessing till June at least, like, when I started, it was September when they appointed, like, the September, the fall of the year.
Hmm.
It took, um, ten, like, ten months.
Oh, I see.
Right, you know, I mean, by the time they nominated, set up and everything.
I, yeah.
Well, okay, um.
Okay, I am item number sixteen, five twenty-seven Roxton Road. We have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans, and Elevations, two photographs of trees on the property, a previous decision affecting the property, and we have eleven form letters in support, and that includes both of the adjacent neighbors. Um, I don't know if Mr. Chang's not with us, all right, we can proceed, um, do I have the agent on the line?
Good morning, committee, my name is Michael Rivera, I'm here representing five twenty-seven Roxton Road, and I wish replacement design located at nine eleven Davenport Road.
Hi, um, panel members, we have two variances before us, no other speakers, any questions? No? Okay, Mr. Dolivier, we're ready to make a decision on this one, um, anything you wanna add that's not in the submissions?
Uh, no, I believe it's pretty straightforward, we're simply proposing basically a four-foot addition off the back of the third floor, uh, it's a very minimal change to the overall FSI, it's really just an additional six point zero seven square meters to the existing. We're not going any higher than the existing side main walls, uh, with the third floor dormer here, so, I, I think it pretty much speaks for itself, open any questions you might have?
Nope, no questions, we're, we're gonna take it into committee for a decision. Panel members, Ms. Hayes?
Thanks, I think what's being proposed is indeed minor, the existing FSI is point nine zero. Um, as the applicant's representative just mentioned, it is a very small addition, um, there will, I don't believe there'll be any additional impact from what's being proposed, and I think it meets the four tests, and if my colleagues have no further comment, I'd move a motion to approve the application with no conditions.
Okay, do I have a seconder? Mr. Solomon, motion to approve, moved by Ms. Hayes, seconded by Mr. Solomon, all in favor. That carries. Item number seventeen. We have bef, that's one ninety-eight Woodmount, we ha- Avenue, we have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans, and Elevations, and we have a five signature petition in support. I only have the agent listed as a speaker, and we have two variances before us, panel members. Okay, do we have the speaker, or, sorry, the agent on the line?
Uh, yes, hello, my name is Marta Savaiska.
Hi, good morning, um, panel members, do you have any questions for the agent? Okay, Marta, we're ready to take it into committee for a decision, anything you wanna add that's not in the submissions?
Uh, no, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, panel, let's take it into committee. Mr. Reed.
Thanks, um, yes, Chair, as you said, there's only two variances being requested, and they're both very minor, I believe, um, they meet the four tests, and therefore will remu- will move approval with no conditions.
Okay, do I have, Ms. Hayes, are you seconding? So motion to approve, moved by Mr. Reed, seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor. Okay, that carries unanimously. Item number eighteen, two eighteen Ashworth Avenue, we have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans, and Elevations, a revised site plan, support from number two hundred, which is adjacent, uh, expressed interest or concern from eight sixty-nine Davenport Road, and correspondence in opposition from eight sixty-one Davenport Road. I show one speaker, do we have the, uh, opposition speaker?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, yes, we do.
Okay. Um, do you have the agent on the line?
Yes, I'm here, Jason Del Troy.
Hi, can you do a brief presentation, no more than five minutes, please, we have one opposition speaker?
Yeah, absolutely, um, I'm just gonna share my screen.
Uh, Jason, you cannot share your screen, you're gonna have to.
Oh, sorry, yes, you mentioned that.
You're gonna have to rely on the materials that's been sent to us already.
Yeah, absolutely, no problem.
Do you want something, do you want us to put something specific up for you?
Uh, the site plan, the proposed site plan, uh, is very helpful.
Okay, we'll start the clock now, then.
Okay, so as you can see, originally there was an illegal rear addition built previous to the owners buying the property. Uh, what we're proposing is to rip down the illegal rear addition, build it properly to the current standards of the building code, as well as extend the existing third story at the top. Uh, we also wanted to propose a new garage, which is in line and actually slightly smaller than the adjacent structure, uh, just to the south there. So, one of the, a cou- few of the items that we're looking for is relief on the rear setback, which again is in line with the existing structure, so it's not really out of, out of character for the neighborhood. Um, we don't really wanna re-landscape the entire backyard, uh, so we're proposing to keep the existing hardscape, which requires us to have a variance for the soft landscaping requirements. Uh, we're also in excess of the FSI, but again, it's not really out of character for the neighborhood, and the density, I believe, is a total of just over one. So other than that, there, it's a very simple application, to be honest, unless there's any other questions?
I think we'll hold questions until, if there are any, after we hear from the opposition, I'll, I'll have you back to address the opposition's concern.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thanks. Ms. Meckler?
Can, can you hear me?
I can now, can you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, my name's Mimi Meckler, and I'm at eight sixty-nine Davenport, which is just basically across the laneway from the, uh, the house on Ashworth. Um, our concern is simply that the, the garage seems to be jutting into the laneway, and it's true that it might be less than the one that's next to it, but the one that's next to it has also gone really far in the laneway, and it becomes a real problem during the winter, because the lane is not cleared, so there's snow, and getting in and out is already very tight. So we would like to just find out why the garage cannot be back where it is supposed to be, if, if I'm reading these rules correctly. And I know you don't deal with, um, operational things, but also the concern is because it's a, a dead-end laneway, we're just wondering what happens to anybody who wants to access their own garages anywhere to the west of this while it's being built. That's it.
Okay, thank you, I'll have, um, Mr. Del Troy answer those questions.
Thank you.
Uh, so to answer the question about clearance and why we can't meet the one meter, uh, we would like to ideally maximize, uh, the amount of, of backyard space that we have available to us, uh, while keeping in line with both the north and the south, uh, structures. So if we needed to move the, the entire structure to meet the one meter variance, we would be, we would be further, uh, lowering our soft landscape requirements at the rear, which we want to avoid doing. Um, so that's why we wanted to keep, try to maximize, keep in line with the existing structures that are adjacent to the, uh, proposed garage. As for operations, obviously, there's no, the, the contractor will not be blocking any of the laneway during construction, any materials will be located onsite, and at no point will they ever be blocking the laneway.
Okay, panel members, do you have any questions for Mr. Del Troy, Mr. Solomon?
Yeah, I have a question about the rear soft landscaping, and, uh, wh- why can't you, um, increase the amount of soft landscaping in the rear by converting some of the hardscape to soft landscaping?
So the existing hardscape was recently done, and it would just be cost prohibitive to have to rip it out and redo, uh, that hardscaping with soft landscaping.
But you are doing new work in the back in terms of the new two-story addition and the new deck, and so you are doing work in the backyard.
Yeah, that's correct, but we just wanted to avoid the cost of the, uh, of the landscaping as well as the additions and the garage.
Right, thank you.
Any other questions? Ms. Hayes?
Is the hardscape that is there, is it permeable pavers, what's the type of material that is there?
I believe, I, I believe the homeowner's on the call, but if, uh, if not, I believe they are, it's stone, um, with, it, it's kind of like an interlocked stone that's permeable in between the joints.
So underneath the proposed deck, although this does not contribute to landscaping requirements, what is under, under the proposed new deck, is it soil, or is it hard, hard scape?
Uh, it would be gravel, could be permeable gravel.
Right, o- o- on top of soil, there's no hardscape underneath?
Yes, correct.
So, okay, so there's no op, your, your client is not prepared to make any changes to the existing hardscaping?
I mean, we're prepared to make changes if necessary, but we would like to avoid it if possible. It was recently done and recently paid for, so we wanna make sure that we kind of protect that investment. But i- if necessary, if this is the sticking point, then I'm sure that we, we can be flexible on it.
Um, how much would you be able to change the numbers to?
Uh, how much would you like, I guess is the question.
I mean, we're, we're try, I, um, we're trying to be kind of reasonable, but.
Yeah.
Um, I'm looking at that big piece that juts out there for starters.
Right, right.
Maybe angling the other one a little bit, like going toward the walkway there on the side. So, I, I, I guess, I'm asking you, if you took that little square piece out on the right-hand side, the top there.
Mm-hmm.
If you got rid of that, and let's say you made a bit of an angle on the one that, to the left there, how much would you be down to? For the variance, for variance number three.
I would have to double-check the numbers, I have them in front of me here, so we'd probably be in the sixteen to seventeen percent range.
Okay, would, would you be amenable to seventeen percent? I'm not sure how the panel members feel about that, Ms. Hayes?
I think that any opportunity for improvement, I'm not gonna dictate what they can do, but I'd like to, um, we're providing the opportunity for them to tell us whether or not they can improve the situation before we make a decision. Um, I would tend to agree that there might, you know, I'm not on the property, but that little niche, um, along the sidewall, there might be an opportunity, and, uh, you do have a deck, so there is outside space other than at, at grade level, so it is what you're, you would be prepared to do for the, um, in our consideration of the application.
We can certainly fill in that little.
The answer can be nothing, the answer can be nothing, and we'll consider it based on that, but this is your opportunity, if you feel you can improve that.
Absolutely, a- and so we can fill in that little alcove, um, kind of to the north, uh, with soft landscaping.
Okay, so I, what I would need is, um, if you're gonna agree to improving the situation, what your number would be for variance number three? Would it be seventeen or eighteen percent, or, and then I would also need the square meters.
Yep, absolutely, so, I have the drawing open, um, let me just double-check the number if you don't mind.
You know, and, and just as a further comment, I, I think that the difference between what the bylaw requires and what they're proposing is a hundred and two square feet, which is like ten feet by ten feet area, and that's why I'm, I'm not even sure why they can't perhaps comply by just making some small changes.
So by filling in that area, it's an additional one square meter? So which gets us to twelve point eight three meters square? Let me just do a calculation here.
And to Mr. Solomon's point, I know you were calculating, he was sort of wondering why you couldn't comply and get rid of it altogether.
Well, again, we just wanted to keep it, it was recently paid for and installed, so, we're, we're amenable to revision, but we just don't wanna have to
Okay.
revise it too much, we're trying to minimize the impact at the rear.
So if we're looking at that site plan drawing, and that bump up on the right side shows that it is twelve feet and eleven and a half inches wide?
That's, that's the entire, that's the, sorry, the, the twelve, eleven and five eights is to the rear stair.
Okay, so that, what's the dimension of that hardscape area?
Uh, the little alcove portion, or the entirety?
Well, th- that little bump up in between the, the two soft landscaping.
So that would add one square meter of soft landscape if we were to infill that, that small bump up?
Okay.
Which puts us at twelve point eight three? A meter square of, of forty-three.
Okay, that's, is that the best you can do then? I mean, so what would that amend the variance three to?
I believe if my numbers are correct on the spot here, that would take us to be in compliance, cause that would be twenty-nine percent.
Really, I think that would make the members very happy.
Oh, that's right, no, sorry, that's not, uh, if I, if I, sorry.
That, that would be great, because that's what Mr. Solomon was kind of, you know, hinting to earlier, if you could comply.
If I divided by the entirety of the rear, which is ninety-three point three meters, that takes us to thirteen point seven five percent. That doesn't, it's already at thirteen point nine three.
That's less than you've got now.
Hmm.
On the variance is thirteen point nine three.
Right.
Well, what I can do is I can hold this and come back to you, because I've got, um, three more items. No, actually, two more after this, and I can come back to you if you wanna just play with your numbers, rather than that.
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so, I'll come, I'll come back to you, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Solomon.
We could do that.
Just, just as a. Just as a further co- just as a further comment, along this, that, uh, lot line at the opposite end, you know, there's a way to maybe get additional soft landscape there, I mean, I guess we're just trying to find where you can add additional soft landscaping so that there's area for water runoff.
Yep, understood.
Okay, so I'll come back to you, and then, cause we can probably finish the morning and, and come back to you.
Okay, sounds good, thank you.
All right. Okay, thanks. Okay, item number nineteen, one nineteen Farnham Avenue, we have before us a copy of the Plan of Survey, Site Plan, Floor Plans, and Elevations, we have an arborist report from Lake Shore Tree Services, and we have forestry is asking for conditions one and two. And I only show the agent as a speaker. Do I have the agent on the line?
Uh, hello, yes, uh, Madam Chair, members of the committee, I'm Delmas Yekrangian, the architect for the owners of one nineteen Farnham.
Good morning, um, I, we have two vari- or, well, we have one variance before us, panel members, it's a very minor variance. Mr. Solomon, you have a question?
Yeah, I just wanted to find out, what is the existing, uh, FSI or GFA on, on the site? Cause I could not find that on the material.
Uh, I believe it's zero point five.
Thank you.
Any other questions, panel members? All right, we're ready to make a decision on this, um, is there anything you wanna add that's not in the materials? Delmas?
No.
Okay, thank you. Okay, let's take it into committee for a decision, panel members. Mr. Chang?
Hi, I would like to make a motion to support this application, uh, since the number is very minor and existing is only zero point five, uh, I think, and there's no changes on the outside, um, in terms of the massing, uh. Uh, I think, and there's no changes on the else side, um, in terms of the massing, uh, I would like to make an approval.
Don't forget forestry one and two.
Oh, right, and the forest three, one and two, sorry for that.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve, moved by Mr. Chang, uh, including forestry one and two, and seconded by Ms. Hayes, all in favor? That carries unanimously. Okay, the final item this morning is sixteen seventy-one Queen Street East. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, correspondence in support from one sixty-six Queen Street, uh, two people at that address, and one oh eight Lee Avenue. And I'm only showing the agent as a speaker. Do I have the agent on the line?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, I'm just trying to communicate with them right now.
Can you get him? If not, we can go back to the other one.
I'm just trying to reach them at their second number that they provided for us.
Okay.
Uh, hello, Robert, you've been unmuted.
Person you wish to reach, please enter it now. For a company directory, please.
Okay, um, if, if I go back to Ashworthy, can you try to, keep trying to get this person, or is that possible?
Uh, I'll keep trying.
Okay, so if you can, um, yeah, give me back. Mr. Daltry, then.
Yes.
We'll go back. All right, so, have you figured anything out yet?
If, so if we added on the south side, that's one point one, that's an additional one point one one square meters, just to extend that all the way to the deck beyond the stairs.
Okay.
Um, that gets us to about, uh, let me think here, thirteen, almost fourteen meters square.
Okay.
From eleven point eight three.
Okay, so just give me the number that you wanna amend the variance to, that, that works for you, and then we'll go, we'll make a decision, I guess, that way.
Sure, um, if we do fifteen percent?
Fifteen percent? And that's how many meters square?
That is a total of, uh, fourteen meters square.
Okay. And you're, you're, you're good with that? All right, um. Panel menor, members, are there any other questions then before we take it into committee with that amendment, Ms. Hayes?
Just one question, um, with respect to that. Do you have any information for the committee on whether or not that is representative of, uh, rear yard landscaping in the area?
I- in the properties that we surveyed, just from the third story of the ones that we could see, many of them are fully hardscaped. Uh, so it would fit in with the, with the neighborhood. The ones that we were able to see, we obviously weren't hearing over fences to look in everyone's backyard.
Any other questions? All right, let's take in, yeah, um. No, I don't think so. No? Hang on, Ashworth. We, she already spoke though. Yeah, yeah, we, we've been on this one for a bit. Okay, so, um, let's take it into committee for a decision. Okay, panel members. Mr. Reed?
Thanks, Chair. Um, I, I think this is an okay application. I, I, I know the neighbors had concerns about the location of the garage, but I think that, given that that's in line with the, uh, adjacent garage and even behind the other garage, I, I can't see that negatively impacting the, the laneway even more. Um, and I think that there, there has been at least some movement on the, on the landscape front, and I, I understand the, um, the reasoning behind that. I think the variances are minor, um, and I think it satisfies, they satisfy the four tests. So, I would move approval of the application as amended, uh, with variance three going to fifteen percent.
Okay, so, motion is moved by Mr. Reed to approve the application, amending variance number three to fifteen percent, which equals fourteen meters square. Do I have a second or? Uh, Mr. Solomon, all in favor? Okay, that motion carries, and Mr. Daltry, if you can maybe, um, have the owners keep in touch with Mr., Ms. Meckler, and, you know, when there are supplies being delivered, so that if there's momentary or, you know, dropping off in the laneway, that she, she would know about it and the other neighbors as a goodwill gesture. Okay, thank you. Were you able to get the person?
Uh, I unfortunately was not able to reach them.
Okay, um, I guess we can go ahead with it then. So, panel members, we are unable to, um, to reach the agent for item number twenty, which, um, again is sixteen seventy-one Queen Street East. We have before us a copy of the plan of survey, site plan, floor plans and elevations, support from one sixty s, one, from sixteen sixty-six Queen Street East, and eight oh one Lee, uh, eight oh, sorry, one oh eight Lee Avenue. All right, let's take it into, uh, committee for discussion. We have two variances before us. Any comments, anyone? Mr. Solomon?
I think what's being proposed is appropriate. Um, the location of this site at the intersection of two major streets, there's no residential directly abutting this particular, um, building and where the restaurant outdoor patio is proposed. So, I think what's being proposed is reasonable, and the variances are minor, and I would move approval with no conditions.
Do I have a second or for that? Um, Mr. Chang, so, motion to approve, moved by Mr. Solomon, seconded by Mr. Chang, all in favor? That motion carries, and we stand adjourned until two o'clock? See you guys later, thanks. Sorry, forgot to mention the time.